In the absence of Ms. Jackson, we have Ms. Teresa Cott. She's in charge of the county clerk's position tonight. So if you will, please mark your attendance so she can give us the roll check. Okay clerk, will you please give us the attendance? Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Miles and Commissioner Kelly are not present.
Okay, everyone else is in attendance. So we have nineteen in attendance, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you. You should have on your desk the minutes of the May eleventh, two thousand nine county commission meeting. Doctor Fadden asked you to look at those. If so, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gannon, who has a second. Second by Commissioner Harrison. All in favor of approving the minutes of the May eleventh county commission meeting as presented, please signify. Oh, I guess I should say go ahead and press your button to approve. Yes to approve, no to not approve. Clerk, please tally those.
We have nineteen yeses, zero objections, and zero no's.
Thank you. The minutes have approved as presented, thank you very much. Alright, let's take a look now at our zoning resolutions. The first resolution we have on the agenda is CZ dash fifteen dash two thousand nine. This is an application of Alfred E. Emrich Jr. from Ag to C two. Oh, I'm sorry, that's one withdrawn by the applicant. The next one we have to vote on this evening will be CZ dash sixteen dash two thousand nine. It's an application of Keith and Sonia Nixon from Ag to E one, who have a motion to bring this to the floor. Motion is made by Commissioner Kohi Kola, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any discussion? You ready for the question? Can I please cast your votes on zoning resolution CZ dash sixteen dash two thousand nine? Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will clerk please tally the votes?
We have nineteen yeses, zero objections, and zero no's.
Okay, this zoning resolution is passed. Thank you. The next resolution coming forward is CZ dash seventeen dash two thousand nine, application of Robert E. White from Ag to C two, who have a motion to bring this resolution to the floor. Motion made by Commissioner Milliken, seconded by Commissioner Kim. Any discussion? Commissioner Bannister.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to re-clarify and apologize if I haven't had a chance to call on some of the committees during the week. And I heard you last week say that the staff originally recommended disapproval, but since that time, I've talked with the applicant and was the staff more plausible after that talk?
We did not get back together as a staff afterwards to talk about it. We did have some concerns initially. We discussed it for quite a long time, and our recommendation was for disapproval. However, the planning commission looked at it very closely. There have not been any objections from anyone, and they've recommended approval. I would suggest that you follow their recommendation.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other questions or comments? Are you ready for the vote? Alright commissioners, please cast your votes on zoning resolution CZ dash seventeen dash two thousand nine. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have eighteen yeses, zero objections, and one no.
Okay, this zoning resolution is approved, thank you. Now moving on to our regular resolutions. First one on our agenda is zero nine dash six dash one, and this is a resolution of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners approving amendments for the two thousand eight nine general purpose school fund, who have a motion to bring this resolution to the floor. Motion is made by Commissioner Albert, who has a second. Second by Commissioner Pelletti, any discussion? Questions been called for. Commissioners, please cast your votes on resolution zero nine dash six dash one, the resolution of the Board of Montgomery County Commissioners amending the general purpose school fund budget. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have seventeen yeses, zero objections, and two no's.
This resolution stands approved, thank you. Second resolution on our agenda is zero nine dash six dash two, a resolution of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners approving amendments to the two thousand eight nine federal projects fund budget, who have a motion to bring this resolution to the floor. Motion is made by Commissioner Creek, seconded by Commissioner Albert, any discussion? You ready for the vote? Alright, questions been called for. Commissioners, please cast your votes on resolution zero nine dash six dash two, and that's amending the federal projects fund budget for the school system. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
Nineteen yeses, zero objections, and zero no's.
This resolution stands approved. Next resolution on our agenda is resolution zero nine dash six dash three, resolution of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners approving amendments to the two thousand eight nine child nutrition fund budget. And this was unanimously, these all have been unanimously approved by the budget committee, and remember, this one is self-funded by the federal government and student payments. I'll entertain a motion to bring this to the floor. Motion is made by Commissioner Baggett, seconded by Commissioner James, any discussion? Questions been called for. Commissioners, please cast your votes on resolution zero nine dash six dash three, amendments to the child nutrition fund budget. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have nineteen yeses, zero objections, and zero no's.
This resolution stands approved, thank you. Next resolution on our agenda is zero nine dash six dash four, and this is a resolution of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners approving amendments to the two thousand eight nine school transportation fund budget. This was also unanimously approved by the budget committee, who have a motion. Motion is made by Commissioner Harrison, second by Commissioner Milliken, any discussion? Questions been called for. Commissioners, please cast your votes on resolution zero nine dash six dash four, amending the school transportation fund budget. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
Zero yeses, I'm sorry, nineteen, zero objections, and zero no's.
This resolution stands approved, thank you. Next resolution is zero nine dash six dash five, resolution of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners approving amendments to the two thousand eight nine extended school programs fund budget. This was also unanimously approved by the budget committee, who have a motion to bring this to the floor. Motion is made by Commissioner Albert, and seconded by Commissioner Pelletti, any discussion? Questions been called for. Commissioners, please cast your votes on resolution zero nine dash six dash five, which is amending the school programs, the extended schools program fund budget. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have eighteen yeses, zero objections, and one no's.
This resolution stands approved, thank you. Next resolution is, it was deferred until next month because that's concerning the volunteer fire department, we'll be bringing that forward July. Alright, the next resolution is zero nine dash six dash seven. This is a resolution to amend the budgets of various funds for fiscal year two thousand nine in certain areas of revenue and expenditure, and this is the county general. Who have a motion to bring this to the floor. Motion is made by Commissioner Bryant, and seconded by Commissioner Creek, any discussion? Commissioner King.
Mr. Bynum, I'd like to, this was a cleanup type of thing, these transport funds, and to, like, maybe look at the county general fund in the lines.
Okay, now in order to do that, first, since this is a formal session, we'll have to vote to suspend the rules, okay?
Okay.
So, okay.
We suspend the rules.
Alright, Commissioner King's made a motion to suspend the rules, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Albert. Okay, and this requires a two-thirds majority, no discussion, no debate, two-thirds majority vote. Commissioners, please cast your votes on approval of suspending the rules in order to amend another portion of the budget, which is airport authority. It's the airport authority budget that needs some discussion on that. Would any commissioner want to? Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Okay, will clerk please tally the votes?
We have eighteen yeses, zero objections, and one no's.
Okay, we suspend the rules as approved, the rules are suspended. So now we're open for discussion. And Commissioner King, will you go ahead and make your amendment, motion to your amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Bynum. I'm the county general fund. I can read the columns, everyone still have their own.
I think everybody has that.
$70 sheet. We were talking about appropriating sixty-one hundred and seventy, six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to the airport authority to help continue their operation through the end of June, through this fiscal year. In order to do that, or whatever we're about, we're gonna have to move some money around and follow the columns if you want to follow me. Column one, account number, well actually, the current budget for this account is fifty-four one thirty-three, to be amended to sixty thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. Account one, account one oh one dash five eight two two zero.
Excuse me, Mr. Reed, what he's referring to is that account schedule that Aaron presented to you on the second page of this resolution, zero nine dash six dash seven. The second page, you know, details all the items that are being amended, and he refers to columns, that's what he's talking about, okay? Go ahead.
Column two, part one is airport authority. Column three, description is contribution. Column four, current budget is fifty-four thousand one thirty-three. Column five, amendment to six.
Okay, you know, on the resolution that was presented last week, resolution zero nine dash six dash seven, alright, the first one I didn't read the words, but the second and third things that are attached, the columns, does everybody get that? Okay, that's what Commissioner King's referring to, when he's mentioning the columns, like the first column has your account code, he was just reading the account code for the airport, one oh one dash fifty-eight two twenty.
Okay, we put down, okay, we put down the document right here.
No, it's not, he's saying this is what we have to be adding to, with this amendment, okay? That's not, that is not the look you got, he's saying this would need to be added if you approve of it.
Okay, we put down the document right here, so it doesn't see.
Do, I suppose, Aaron, you have to get it on the document reader, so that you can look at where Mr. King's talking about, it's just that shit. Columns eight, oh, I'll just second, we'll get it up here. Commissioner Stoffel, I don't think, I've got a motion, and I don't have a second yet, so do you want to second it?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask if we can have just a few minutes for the commissioners who made the motion to kind of put down the paperwork once that he can.
Okay, that's what she's trying to show me, okay? Just come in. I hope we get that done, okay? It won't show up? There we go. What you would in effect have to do is you add this to there, I guess there's that third page, which is the final page of this. Well, it goes with the one oh one, so the first page has the county general fund, it starts with code one oh one, the account code, and so if you put this in place, it would be that fifty-eight two twenty. So I guess the best place to write it, I could do the bottom of page one, and you're writing the J on it, I'm sorry, I meant to do eight hundred thousand dollars. If you want to just write across there, because that would be the addition.
Basically, what we're doing, we're changing that eight hundred thousand dollars to eight hundred and six thousand four hundred and seventy-eight.
Right.
Is that, if I understand this correctly?
I think, Mr. Commissioner, if we get a second to this, then we have some discussion. So if you, if somebody wants to second this, so we can discuss it, okay, second it by Commissioner Gannon, alright, now, discussion. Jerry Clark and Ron Whitaker are both here, they're both members of the airport authority. Jerry Clark has agreed to speak on this, so he can give you some detailed information about why they're coming forward with this. And the reason that it has to be done tonight, of course, is to get it passed in the budget for this year, this is the last session, we'll have the last voting session, so this is their last opportunity to amend the budget. So, Mr. Clark.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for hearing us, and I know it was outside your normal rules to do so. And Ronnie and I, we're all private business men, we're not used to governmental procedures, so I hope you'll bear with us. What this is about, and the reason we're asking for it, is that the airport is in dire cash needs right now, and this sixty-one seventy-eight, this money that we've already expended, that we took from an account in the trailer park that we've been operating, and the city's already done their amendment and brought their check out tonight, or this morning. What this grant is about is when we built the new T hangars, which we talked to you all about before you funded last year, and we also did the live flight hangar, which was privately built, we built a new apron and some other related security fencing that changed the project from what it originally been as seventy-six thousand to a total project of eighty-eight three fifty-six. This allows a security access to the live flight hangar and to the T hangars, they're on the north end of the airport road there. Now, we just got back the information from the state, our contract with the state, and have requested the funds from the state to pay for this, and we've already put out our local share and matched that, and the airport's just quite frankly out of money. And even this will not get us through the end of fiscal year, as we've just found out in the last few days, what the actual cash position is at the airport, because of the potential problems, or the actual problems we've had operating the trailer park, and then just to reduce the economy of FBO and fuel sales and so on. But this is absolutely critical, to get this money in this year's budget, otherwise it wouldn't be or not, and it's not gonna solve our whole problem, and Ronnie is going to address that in a second, but we absolutely have to have this money, or we'll have to shut the airport down at the end of the week. And I hate to come to you with that kind of a situation, but that's where we are. And it's not ever anything, I've never been involved in this, got this base to go on cash, and we weren't aware of it until Friday. So I apologize for having to bring you that information.
Miss, do you have any questions, Mr. Clark, before he turns around, and Mr. Dr. Whitaker?
Mr. Clark's part is a ten percent, ninety percent was paid by the state reimbursement, and we had to advance out of our cash flow, operating money, to pay this off. Of course, it took six months for the state to pay us, when they pay us, then we come to you for the rest of the money. So that is a capital project, it's very important you understand the difference of what he's talking about and what I'm talking about.
This is a capital project, the work's been completed, been completed, moved in the hangars and, but we're just now getting the paperwork from the state, it's taking that long, and we desperately need money.
I don't wanna take too much of your time, but I feel like I've got to try to explain this so you understand. I did meet with the budget committee Wednesday, we're coming back, it's next Wednesday, I guess it is, to get some clarification from the attorney, that this has been a county, city venture ever since the trailer park was purchased, and our attorney will be there to speak to that issue tomorrow, and then I'm going to, or Wednesday, and then I'm gonna try to give you the amended budget that we have. Jerry mentioned our cash flow, we don't have it, we do not have the money in our account right now to pay the bills we've got to pay tomorrow. He mentioned closing it, that's not a threat, we've got to close it, we don't have the money, we can't even pay employee taxes that are due in here end of the week, for the government, the automatic withdrawal from the bank account, so we have no choice. What does that mean? That means if a new corporation comes in this week, in their jet, to survey it properly, there will not be a land party. Not a very good thing for new businesses coming in, but that's just what's gonna happen, that's the rules of FAA, the airport will be closed and nobody can come in. Let me run through this real quickly with you, and try to explain why we're in this situation. Also, I just want to go ahead and make another public announcement, the airport manager resigned today.
Can you hear him okay? Can you go back to the microphone, please?
No, okay, okay, don't keep seeing the screen. But the airport, the airport manager resigned today. That's all I'm gonna say. Alright, let me explain why the airport is in this situation, and why we've got a major issue coming up in this new budget, that's why I'll be coming back to the budget committee to try to give you a more accurate, revised version of where we will be this next year. First item you see at the top is we have a decrease this year in our new T hangar income. Why did that occur? We had to lower the rate twenty-five dollars per hangar per month to be competitive, to get people into hangars. They could still go to Hopkinsville and go into hangars for half of what we charge. We also are only running eighty percent capacity, numbers two out of ten are not ready. So that's income, what else is it on? Two hundred and twenty-five dollars per month, per hangar, we didn't get. So I just ran it off early on a sheet of paper over here to try to give you some idea, but that's sixty-four hundred dollars of income that was projected to come in on our budget this last year, we improved budget last year, we didn't get. All this was not brought to our attention by the manager. This board is a vision board, and we don't intend to be operating airport out there day-to-day business, we can't do it. Some airport boards in the past have been out there mowing, cutting grass, and all those things, we can't do it, we're all business people and don't have time to do it. The second reason for this decrease is something I'm really concerned about for next year, we have just had to grant the FBO, the big space operator out there that sells gas and does the other things around the airport, whatever, people coming in, we, and the asset gets half of the money from all the hangars that he's in charge of renting, we have had to forgive his payments to this airport board for the next, or the airport authority for this next three months, he can't pay it. So what do we do? We kick him out? Now we have no mechanic out there, no FBO, whatever. Why does he not have the money? Primarily, nobody's flying. If you go out there, I've had one, a few planes flying, I filled up a fuel yesterday ago to Louisville to see my new grandson, it's probably the only gas you sold all week. So, we are taking a twelve thousand dollar hit that he should've been paying for his rental space at our main terminal, his bin holding down there, and the other things that he's in charge of, he gets the money from, we're taking a twelve thousand dollar hit, six from the county, six from the city, that he can't pay, we can't get blood out of the terminal. Now here's the big one, we have got a decrease in trailer fees, because I went to the secretary out there and said, I don't care what you've got on this income statement, I wanna know how much money came in from trailer port rents. We lost nineteen thousand two hundred dollars in people that are up to eight months behind on their rent, that are currently now illegal, just started legal to get them out of there. And there's two to five more, we're fixing to go after them, not quite that far behind. So those people haven't been paying the rent all year, so there's nineteen thousand two hundred dollars we didn't get because those lots were empty, while lots empty? Well, you need to go out there and see if you have your family living out there. It's all clear, Mr. Ford Campbell? I do not understand, I said this is budget meeting, city-county operation, how in the world, both parties let that trailer port be established with sewer, water, electric that wouldn't meet city codes, I don't know. Because of that, the city now has informed us, three months ago, they gave us a three month timeframe to get ourselves straight, which we haven't ever do, they no longer read the meters. As of this month, here in another week or so, we get our first bill for forty lots at that trailer park. We have to pay the utilities, and then go back over and try to collect from the people. The problem over there, the water faucets, or the water in it, are under the trailers, and it's just a regular faucet. So gas and water, go out there, turn it off because they were legal, guess what happens five minutes after gas and water leaves? Go back home, all the legal, gas washes, we're not paying anymore, you collect it if you can get it. And even if we collect it, there's already at least ten to twelve of them that we're kicking out. So our first water bill will be in excess of two thousand dollars that we've got coming in here in the next two weeks. Water sewer repairs out there, nineteen thousand dollars, we paid revenue plumbing for work just to repair and try to keep it going. And I've done approach the budget committee, I'm not gonna beat that horse tonight, but we've gotta cut the bleeding, and as soon as you give us permission and give us what we need to operate next year, we're closing it, and trust me, it will be the best investment you've made, because there's no way with these numbers, and they're gonna get worse, we can come anywhere close to having any money to even make the trailer port by itself, much less getting money to put back in kids. When that trailer port was full, we had enough money to pay twenty-four thousand back to the city every year for the property, on that note, and we have twenty-four thousand to put back into the operating firm, to operate. Forty-eight thousand dollars gone. Increases in expenses, I won't burden you at the bottom part of it there, but we had overtime this year, we had one maintenance man controlling a forty-plus unit trailer park and our whole facility. We have five thousand dollars in overtime for one blessing for. And as we know now, I'm gonna admit our costs, that should've been a lot item, it ain't there, we didn't know. And making worse, this is a part-time person that was supposed to be working no more than thirty-nine hours and making overtime. Insurance for new hangar, another twenty-two hundred, and electricity is seventy-four hundred dollars. Now, as Jerry told you, and I've got, I'm gonna have to submit the budget, I didn't bring Patty tonight, let's just get us, Carolyn told us, we have to come tonight, we can't get the money for this year, so that means at the end of the year, this airport will be in a rate of twenty-five, thirty-five dollars, at least. But you, this will be given to the budget committee, and I will explain it to them in detail Wednesday if they want me to.
But now, that's on next year's budget.
That's for next year's budget, but I'm giving you the reasons, all these things have been going on this year, has got us into this trap it's here now.
So, so are you still asking for six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars from now to the end of the month?
I'm asking for that six, I'm asking for that six thousand dollars, that's nothing but money that's already appropriated, I, we don't really understand why we're here, because that money should've already been paid back to us, because it was agreed on back in, that's about the commission.
Well, I'm not sure it was, that's, that's.
It was never brought forward in the resolution.
I don't believe our, our people brought it forward.
Exactly, it didn't, yeah.
Well, it may not, but that's a capital project money, but it come out, we paid it out of our operating capital until we assumed we were gonna be repairing. But I'm also standing here telling you, I'd like to have another twelve thousand five hundred, and I just gave you the reasons why, so that this airport can end up in the black, we hope.
And we're asking.
And we'll go back to the city tomorrow for the same thing, city's already paid their stakes, we'll go right back to the city tomorrow, if you can agree on it, and say, give us that, now we can at least close this thing out legally like we're supposed to.
So you're really asking for the end, what, for eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
If this commission wants us to be able to balance this current budget this next year, and then we will be back with you for next year, and in reality, it probably won't be that much worse, because you've already looked at the same numbers we're looking at. But again, for next year, if this FBO is not able to pay us that six, seven thousand dollars a month, what are we gonna do? If we lose more people on the trailer park, if it stays open, what are we gonna do? It's a no-brainer for us, the trailer park's gotta go, and it would already be gone if we just had fun. City has agreed to provide the. twenty-four thousand a year for that. And the county's gonna get a good deal because the city's gonna have to pay that off. They've agreed that they will take, forgive that whole amount if we can get the twenty-four thousand.
Okay, let's start just a minute if you would, Doctor. Does anybody have any specific questions of Doctor Whitford before we, um, okay, Commissioner Adelman?
I have Sarah. Sarah.
Yes, I can play.
And I'm not sure if this will be him who can answer or somebody else can answer. Why are we doing this at the last minute change? Why are we trying to change it because that broke and they'll get the money?
Exactly. From what I'm understanding, from what they told me too, is that the manager had not been forthcoming about the true condition of their financial situation.
Well, what I have heard, you have given me every reason why they're in the situation they are, to your understanding. And I do not believe, and this is respectfully said being said, not to put me, you didn't want to be damned. But it sounds to me like the problems are so major that, one of the questions is, how much money did we give in last year's budget for the county portion?
Eric, you got the budget amount of this year of you, Doctor Whitford, do you have anything?
I've got the one that says budget two thousand and eight. So is that?
Eight-nine, that's fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars.
You gave fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four thousand.
The city gave us.
And the city gave us fifty-four thousand also.
Yes, sir.
So we delivered the city and the county had our taxes doubled in that area to keep the airport open. You're asking for six thousand tonight or twelve thousand tonight?
I'm asking for eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
I'm asking for twelve thousand, and we're gonna have to have to pay our expenses until June the third, the third first, whatever day it is.
Okay, and how much does the city give you? Have they just given you extra?
They will be giving the same amount.
Another eighteen thousand. So we're.
They already gave us the six. We got that today. And then they will be approached tomorrow on this other. The reason we're bringing this up, we were told this is the last opportunity to get in on this project. Otherwise, we would have been back to you two or three weeks of the rest of this, but we didn't. They say this is last night, so that's why we're here.
Well, you know, every, I have been on county commission for three years, but I have one city council meetings and some county commission meetings. And it sounds like our airport has been nothing but a sinking hole. We have had poor management. People don't know what's going on. We have a trailer park that sounds like nobody would want to live in, and what you said, that's an embarrassment to the county and the city for even putting money in to keep something like that going. And if our city, gas, water, our coast department, are doing their jobs, it sounds like the biggest fiasco that I have ever heard on my mind. It's a mess. And I, I, I feel for you, but my kid came in and said, "I do six thousand this, another six thousand next week." We're not sure this is gonna get us next, next year. You know, somewhere you gotta say none. Somewhere you gotta say, "Close the thing down." We are not doing the taxpayers of McGurk County, let alone the city taxpayers of Clarksville, any favors by keeping throwing money in the hole. It sounds just like our US government, where we're passing out bucks, taking loans from other countries. We have no business. We have lost our ability to think. I don't have that kind of money. And I have to tell my kids to know a lot of times, and there comes a time that we have to stand up and say, "Enough is enough." If, if we own an airport that's that bad a shape, honestly, how the world would not be implausible for anybody living there right now? It's just absolutely unacceptable.
That is a possibility. That's one of our concerns.
Where, my other question is, where is this money coming from, Mr. Mayor, out of our budget to get that?
It will come out of the fund balance of the county general's line.
Can we afford to do that?
Well, you would look at that sheet that we're, you know, we're proposing amendments on tonight. There were already amending it because of the, the main thing on there. Most of them, they have revenue and expenses because it's just updating or amending their figures accurate for the books plus. So really, the only expense on there that was not even, that we had, didn't have revenue for is the jail, the, it's the medical services. The other contracted services, you know, it's way last week that we had passed the amount the insurance company would pay. So we had five hundred thousand, and then the inmate that escaped has additional medical expenses. So we were told by the sheriff that we were gonna need eight hundred thousand more dollars to pay the medical bills and to sell the inmates in the jail for this fiscal year. So this would be adding to the eight hundred thousand that were already requested that you take out of the fund balance. So it'd be like eight hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars would be the total that we'd be adjusting to the fund balance. And Eric, when did you say that we'd bring the fund balance down? Was that on that page?
Actually, I didn't. That's, that's not a calculation that I've done. But we closed greatly higher than eight hundred, eighteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars into fund balance each year from unexpended funds in county general. But for me to pull eight hundred thousand dollars together from inmate medical, from revenue accounts that were over budget, I would have had to have nickel and dime it together and didn't have the additional revenue to do that at this time. So at the end of the year, when we close the books, I will close greater than that into the county general fund balance. But I don't have it available to show on this report right now.
Until everything closes out, we've done something there. You see what she's saying? Whatever.
It sounds like to me that we are just playing Russian roulette here.
Now, I think one thing, and I'm not trying to defend all this certainly, but I think one thing you have to keep in mind is that an airport service for a community such as ours is not always a profit-making situation. In the best-case scenario, it is. But for years, it has not been in Forestville. We do have, when you talk, when you go to the federal or the Tennessee Aeronautics Association Board meetings, many of the people across middle Tennessee will say, "We have a very enviable runway." And people that fly in and out say that. We've always had issues, you know, since our terminal's gotten older. But I think that, that we've got a fixed base operator who's had a contract that's been about how long? How old is his contract?
We just renewed it, but he's had, he's been there forever.
Okay, and it's renewed through two thousand and eleven?
We had to negotiate parts.
Right.
But let me, let me say something, Mr. Adelman. You all, I think you can say we put fifty-four thousand operating in it, but we got last year about, about a million. I'm saying this out of, out of, out of everybody. About a million, too, I think, came into the airport from federal grants to build a hangar. And that hangar rent is, if we get it full, and we will, we're in a bad economy right now. You know, everybody knows the economy's bad. And flying is, is a corporate activity that we don't have a lot of, and we're building, and we'll build more with HSC. But the small flyer, the general aviation flyer, just can't afford the kind of gas prices that aviation fuels have. But we brought in about a million, two in federal funds. We built a new hangar. That hangar generated about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, twelve-five per year on a fifty-four thousand investment. I doubt there's anything you've got that gives that a good return. So to, to imply that we're operating like the federal government, I think, is a bit of a stretch.
Well, if you were, if you were operating like that, how long could you stay in business if you had no other way of getting any more funds?
Well, we would have to shut it down. That's why I'm here talking to you about it now. The airport is not a money-making operation. It's never gonna be.
Well, it looks to me like it'd be cheaper for our people that are coming to Foxville to go to National Airport. And then that's, it'd be cheaper for us to bus in here.
Well, they want corporate people that work at Ford Campbell and companies like HSC that we go out and try and get. They're not gonna come to play that in that airport. They don't have to show the flight in here properly weekly once they start operating.
Can we have some other questions?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Stuck?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment. First question, can you refresh my memory as to exactly how this airport responsibility is set up?
Right, it's set up as a separate authority that operates under a board that's controlled by the city and county. Now, we appoint two members to the airport authority, and the city appoints two, and there's one at large that's nominated or appointed by the people that already served on the board. But the financial responsibility, the operating budget part, and the capital improvements have primarily been split between the city and the county, fifty-fifty. What he was talking about over a million dollars is that there is, there's grant money available with a very small match. It's usually, what, ten percent, sometimes maybe twenty percent. So when Hugh Smith sat on the board, he was working a lot with the, with the Tennessee Aeronautics Association Board to see that the runway got improved. You recall a couple of years ago that we had issues with the cross-section runway being weak, and they spent a lot of money to reinforce that cross-section. And then the new hangars were built. Of course, they improved the runway, and a lot of that expense is paid for by the state, wasn't it?
Mine's been.
And that's flowed through money a lot of times from the Federal Aviation Association or, you know, board. The hangars were, they grant money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but now who's receiving the, the income right now on the hangar rentals?
We do.
The airport authority?
New hangars, we do. Old hangars are controlled by the FBI.
Okay, all right.
She's been, she's been changing, we're gonna get all the money. We're not gonna give you.
All right, let me ask you a question now. If, if we're excusing the fixed base operators, what, rent the next three months, does that not in effect break his contract?
We're gonna be dealing with that at the end of the three months.
Okay.
And that's one of the scary things. But the issue here is, we won't have, there will be no mechanic out there. We'll have nothing if they're out. But that may be a reality that we'll be looking at. We just don't know yet.
I think that, that certainly the contracts, and they went to discuss this too, the contracts, when they're rewritten, can certainly be improved to position the airport authority in a better financial situation.
We've got good contracts now if people were flying like they worked for nine eleven. You know, that's the killer. The private aviation, as you mentioned, that's gone. We're not even looking at that anymore. We're looking at corporate. We don't want to build more small hangars. We've got all we need. We'd like to build a couple of corporate hangars for the government.
Okay, Commissioner Stuck, that answers your question.
Pardon it. The comment I have is that, this is my personal opinion, is I think that we need to go ahead and approve this resolution primarily because I think that we can't afford not to do this. But on the other hand, like many of the commissioners, I think that there should be some strings attached. I think that the commission and the city need to take a deeper interest in how this airport is being run. And I think that we need to take another look at the authority and how it's structured, and it needs to be changed because I remember Commissioner Morris and his problems and the reason that that airport manager left, and now we're having problems with this. I think that we need to take a deeper interest in how this airport is being run and the overall view of where we want it to be in the next five to ten years. And I would like to know if the mayor can stretch that back to me or some mechanism.
I think these gentlemen have the same feeling, Commissioner Stuck. I think that we all want the operation of the airport to improve. I think that's a given. And it's how we all doubt it, that we need to be open and honest with one another and work together on it.
And I'll tell you, we would welcome your, your input because if you don't fund this airport at adequate levels, you're never gonna have anything except for losing operation after.
Well, I agree with that, but I would also like to, to make sure that we have enough participation at this end to be able to avoid these kind of problems in the near future and the far future.
I can tell you, as a businessman, the last thing Rodney and I want to do is come bring you this information. We just were not privy to it until Friday.
You might say, we two are representatives of the county. Two of the other members are representatives of the city. So we do represent your interests, and then they represent the city interests. There's one other that we didn't get it.
Well, I understand, but I think that we need to take a closer look at how this is all operating and.
We're glad.
So that's, that's my recommendation, and that is my view on this resolution.
Okay, thank you. I have some other comments or questions. Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. Doctor Whitford, let me make sure I'm clear. You said one of the reasons that you were coming and asking for this was that you had spent money on the capital project and had just gotten reimbursed. Is that?
The six thousand dollars was a capital project that we had reimbursed ninety cents from the federal. We have a local match, ten percent of it.
Okay, let me stop.
This was a amendment to the existing.
Yeah, when it was paid, when it had to be paid, everything was all done. We took that money out of our operating budget to pay for it instead of coming out of the capital expense because the manager evidently had not come, and we did not know that nothing ever come to commission about it. It's six thousand for you, it's six thousand for the city.
It never was proper, it didn't go through the proper.
Didn't go through the check.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't come to us as a request that, you know, it was a grant that we were gonna pay part of, and the city would pay part of. So now they're finding out on the tail end of it that now they need the local match.
We're cleaning it up.
But the, the airport authority, make sure I understand this, can they or, or can they not commit the county to capital projects without a vote with the county commission?
No, they cannot.
Okay, all right. Now, the follow-up, you said that.
The, the, this was an addendum. One of the big ones that was done, though, this was a tee hangar, the tee hangars would be a tent. This was a denim on that that was made to accommodate lifeline.
Yeah.
That's what it's all about.
And you all knew about lifeline, you about.
You about hangars.
This is.
We did.
It's just a dent.
Yeah. I, I think you said that the contract provider out there now is good through the twenty-eleven.
That's correct.
Well, there could be some question on that, if his contract is broken with, have forgiven his rent.
That, that was my question. You said that we were going to forgive it for three months?
That's correct. That was a request, that we'd forgive it for three months, give him time to try to get a bill back or even make the payment. It's either that or he just closes the golden links.
Well, you know, from, from what I've heard tonight, and you know, this is, has been in the, the media, and the county commission, and city council probably for the last twenty, twenty-five years, back and forth, back and forth. One thing I'm sure of, we don't need to be in the trailer park business. One thing I'm not real sure of is, do we need to be in the airport business? I think we do, but I don't think we can operate it in the manner it's been operated for the past twenty years. If the counties and the city are gonna be in the airport business, we need to be in the airport business and do it right. I don't disagree with you on that. But there is a gap to the accountability out there at Outlaw Field to where we can go back to our constituents and say, "Your tax dollar is being wisely spent at Outlaw Field," and I can't say that right now.
We can't run any more tight than it's being run. It's one airport manager, there's one maintenance man, and one receptionist secretary. That's all that's out there. The rest of the bills that you see on your line numbers in your budget, that, that's it. There's nothing else there.
I don't think there's standards next as a person. It's just waiting.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I didn't mean to infer that. I think the trailer park is money.
The trailer park is very, that, like I say, if I hadn't gone back and later and found out where we really were, instead of just using the pie in the sky, operating the money we got coming in, we wouldn't know what to do.
Boot for sale, sign on it.
Well, it's gonna be, it's nothing, nobody.
We have to have that operating. The reason it was originally bought was the, the FAA required it to be bought before the approaches coming in. You can't build anything back. So it could be on our white next to road a little bit, but the rest of that, it has to be flat because of the approaches coming in.
I have some more to ask for, Mr. Adelman. Commissioner Kendall?
I agree with Mr. Manier.
Harrison?
This is a topic that we need to do this, but because if we keep talking, we're gonna go further. Because I thought we started out with six thousand or whatever, twelve thousand, eighteen thousand. So maybe we better, if y'all wanted to move on this, it's quick, we're talking. I would also like to know how many hangars are in use?
We have ten brand-new hangars, eight of which are leased, two are vacant. These are ones that we brought online in October. We have ten that the FBO leases. All of those are full, and he gets the revenue from that.
We get half of it.
We get a half of it. If he manages the operation of that. We have.
Another hangar.
Another hangar that's.
Three planes that the FBO leases, pays us five hundred dollars a month for a hangar, and he rents it out for seven fifty, two fifty per plane.
And that's a larger hangar.
And then there's one former hangar that goes crossways, that rents out for about a hundred and fifty, I think, a month. So you've got your four, ten, and ten, is the six, you got what, twenty-four? Twenty-four plus a million and hopelessly, you've got that twenty-second spots.
Okay, next, Commissioner Sockel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too concur with Commissioner Kendall about, we're hearing a bunch of numbers across the country, I'm not mistaken, the amendment proposed was for six thousand dollars.
Wait, the first one was that. I think, Mr. King, you didn't understand that they have some other...
I did not know.
Right, and...
We didn't buy it, didn't not know that.
He wasn't aware of that, they weren't aware of that when they made the motion in second.
But as far as we stand, the amendment that was proposed in second is for six thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. My next question is, these two letters, the initial letters dated March ninth, two thousand and nine, from the state to the airport manager. We've heard some chatter about there wasn't so much transparency between the board and the airport manager, but the city, we have a copy of the letter sent to the city dated June first. And maybe I don't keep my ear to the ground enough, but the first I heard about this was the seven fifteen tonight when they started to talk, fifteen minutes into this forum meeting. It says that a county person was sent this, and I don't know if it got lost in the mail or if we received it and the information wasn't passed on, but it's rather frustrating to be given this information.
This has to run out, we're out until we got it on this afternoon as well.
Fifteen minutes into a meeting, and so...
Well, that's why we had to vote to suspend the rules to even discuss it.
Right, I understand that process, thank you.
But the reason was, our plan was to come initially just for the six thousand, get this through tomorrow, and then have another week or so to come back to you again. We did not know legally this is the last night it can be done. That's why it's all on us now.
Okay, Commissioner Robards.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did we approve a capital project slot and amount of money to the airport this last year?
Yes, we did. I don't recall that.
Oh, six hundred thousand, maybe?
It was six hundred this year, one hundred for the architect.
Architect, five hundred for the...
But it's still in there, they've not drawn any of that down.
They haven't drawn any.
We only have 20 days left of this budget, right? We have a manager that we don't have to pay a salary. What was his salary?
He's being paid.
He quit and we paid him? Okay, what was his salary?
About fifty-four, fifty-five thousand a year. We don't want to really go into all that tonight. But he has to be paid a month's salary plus his approved vacation time and sick leave.
If he quits?
He quit.
You told us he resigned, so if he quits at the airport, we give him a month's salary, we give him all these benefits, and then you come and ask us for eighteen thousand dollars? That's what we're talking about on this board class. One other question, please do not take this person. I only ask this question. How many of the board members fly airplanes?
Well, I used to, but I tested my heart to have a shot. Three out of five.
Three out of five.
Actually, four, we have the fourth place piled.
Yeah, he's piled.
Three out of five, so it's a big benefit for three of the five board members to have an airplane out there.
It's no different with the close, it's actually closer, my plane gets flown, his is here.
Okay.
And Charles' plane?
Charles' plane is a...
Because a hangar, we don't have a hangar bigger than the house at this point.
You also say that you always pay, you pay the city back some money, but the county, and you never mention that the county receives any payback money?
That was a loan from the city for the land purchase that was originally done. And you're not participating in that land purchase. All of it came from the city.
Okay, and I didn't know that, and I apologize. You also put a lot of blame on us for the trailer park. And if I remember, every time the airport people come up, and I apologize for saying people because there's been numerous different faces that I've looked at from the airport. And we've always asked, I've heard commissioners, myself specifically, ask how that trailer park is doing. And it's always been reported to us that it's doing, it's operating fine, we're not making much money of it, but a lot of blame has been put on us on this trailer park. And I understand.
Question, though, the issue is, it did make money. At one time, it was making twenty-four thousand dollars to pay the city back, and it was making twenty-four thousand to the operating budget, and you didn't have to come up with it, it made that money. But now that these people have been kicked out and all we've got is people that can't pay, it's done reached the point now that it's continuing to break in.
And the people that live in their own mobile homes, so they're just randomly paying, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And the budget, of course, that's reckless.
And they paid their utilities up until now, but now we have to pay the utilities, and we've got to find a way to collect it, which means we'll have to hire another person to go out and meet everybody's meters and then try to get the money later.
I have two more questions. Mr. Robards, that. Alright, Commissioner Bryant.
I don't disagree, I'm not approving this eighteen thousand tonight. I have this freedom, the nine thousand, five thousand, four obviously. I think everybody here wants that Lifelight to have a place, and I know now they do have a hangar there and they're operating. However, for the eleven and a half years I've been on the commission, the trailer park has been issued, couldn't get rid of it because it was, the city had to be paid back. I was totally against the city and county relinquishing the ownership of it and forming a board when that occurred. So I will support this money for y'all, and I hope that, I know that we have had a lot of issues out there with managers. I think since I've been on the commission, this is the third airport manager that I know of that we've been through, maybe more, I've forgotten more. So hopefully you all can get together and get some good management out there and we can see some positive news for the airport out there. I know we've received some federal grants, I know y'all have been working on getting more federal money in there. And we do need that for corporate America to come into Parksville. However, I do not think that the city and county can continue on putting the citizens of Parksville and Montgomery Counties tag dollars into a black hole. So that's kind of my opinion for tonight. I will look for this eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, but I will reevaluate it when much of time comes to see how it ends up.
See, much of that hole is going to be closed, though, if we should close the trailer park, because that's where major bleeds is coming from there. Our maintenance man got about that lot of overtime, that's all the trouble.
Okay, Mr. Creek.
When Lifelight was moved from Downhill Madison Street out there, was that an expense to the airport?
Lifelight was funded by two individuals who happened to be on the board that decided it was important enough for Lifelight to be here that they funded the building that they're in, and Lifelight pays them rent. They rent the land that is on, that their hangar is on, from the airport, and we are paid for that.
That's fair market value.
Fair market value, just the same as I built a hundred and fifty thousand dollar hangar out there myself, and I pay rent on that land every year at the airport for the privilege of having my hangar there. So they fund, these two individual board members that own that facility are rentalers to Lifelight. Lifelight will not come in here and commit the building themselves there, they just don't do that long-term, even though they appear to be here. But it's tough, and unfortunately, they need to do it.
Probably, but let's be there, but if the land wasn't privately owned...
The land is owned by the airport.
And we lease it to them.
And the preparation of the land to build the building was paid federal funds.
It was paid for by who?
By the... By the federal state funds.
So you didn't participate at ten percent in part of the ramp, part of the paving cost that was, it's right by that new hangar that we built. So there was a little bit of participation by both the city and the county. And probably this six thousand dollars here, the bulk of that probably is due to that project, so you could say you contributed. I understand, they contributed a huge amount of money in kind of services to this community. It's a very valuable service to have that, and it's a very, the least place to have it, is up there.
We've only built this floor less than two years now, and I can tell you, the decisions we've made in these issues have been profitable for the airport. And we're having to be accountable for past issues that we've got to clean up. And we did last year talk to you about closing the trailer park there?
Yeah, I specifically, you probably forgot, but I told you last year, because I made a report on the status of the facility, that we were off limits to the military for renting. And the utilities that were put in there were put in so shoddy and so bad that we spent huge amounts of money just keeping it running. We had a water bill that we just saw a little while ago this afternoon, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars just on the house system because we got another leak in the line some ways. And it was put in, not to code, and if we came to you and said, let's operate a trailer park, we'd be asking you for two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand just to get the utilities up and going.
That's not true, there's two hundred and fifty thousand just for the sewer.
The sewer, and then water would be... Now, let me tell you this. We volunteered, we got on the board, and I'm going to tell you this, and I don't mean in a negative way, but after I've been on the board three months, I decided that what I was doing was on a board to run a trailer park, not an airport. And that's what we've been doing. And I tell you, I've spent the last five days working on airport business. And I worked till twelve-thirty on Friday night back on my business, just trying to take care of the things I could do because of this mess. And I can tell you, we don't like being here and surprising anybody. That's not the way any of us run our private business. And y'all, I appreciate the comments you made, and I really do appreciate them because I feel exactly like you do. And if I thought for one minute I was out there putting your tax dollars in mine in a black hole, I would get off this board like that.
I still have some more questions, commissioners, but I'm going to make a comment to Mr. Creek on Vanderbilt. Gateway would not let them put a hangar on their property, and Vanderbilt, Lifelight wanted a hangar so that they could land and take off and have a place to store their helicopter so there wouldn't be so much wear on it in a hangar. And they needed an office space as well, so that was what they were accommodating with. We didn't feel like the city or the county would want to help put out money to do that, to build that. So that was when the two people on the board said they would because they thought it was a valuable service. That's the reason it went about being done.
The other issue is it can be, it can take off land in bad weather, and even at the other hospital, they could not do that.
Right, okay. Commissioner Milliken.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Who reports to the board on the expenses and income and such as that? I'm just budget manager.
Airport manager.
Okay, so evidently he was not reporting...
That's correct.
This problem?
That's correct.
Okay, should he have been giving you a monthly report of a status report?
Absolutely, we got monthly pay for poets, but numbers don't mean months. You don't really know if these people on the trailer park are not paying them. You know, their money is based on what we're supposed to get in and what necessarily what we're bringing in.
We were showing accounts receivable for income on the trailer park and not the cash flow, wasn't a proper cash flow analysis.
So the information you were getting was not what you need?
Well, it was, sometimes like my children, if you didn't ask the right question, you didn't get the right answer.
So that's why you were not really informed on this until... Right, okay.
We've been digging into it, and we now feel like we've got an handle on what it is.
Right, but now we need to get, we need to be accountable, we need someone there that reports actual money so you know where you are.
We have, that we are working with that will modify the kind of reports you get cash analysis each month.
We're going one more step, though, the budget and all this has been approved by the CBA office. So we're doing a lot of work on just not being reported to us.
And it's a system that's been in place during all this time that we just got a lot of things to fix.
Okay, another question. What do we have to do to close that trailer park? Is that a decision that the board can make?
You give us the money that we need to fund it, city gives us their share, we've already said they would do it, then we go to it, thirty days we'll have it closed, or as soon as we get those people out of there.
Okay, now, you're talking about if we approve the eighteen, what is it, eighteen six or whatever it is? Sixteen thousand?
That's to get us by until the end of this year, fiscal year, end of this month. If your new budget, you approve our new operating budget. It has the money, the twenty-four thousand contribution from you, the twenty-four thousand from the city, and then I can go right back and we can close the trailer park.
We'll put the notices out next week.
Okay, how can you, my next question is, you say some of these people own their trailers.
They all do.
Okay, how do you close up something if they own the property?
They hook to the trailer and take it somewhere else, one or two of them have done that.
Okay, so therefore owns the land and we can request, we can close it to the airport, then they will have to move their...
Yes, we're pretty easy. There'll be very honest with you, there'll be some trailers that just go jump and they won't be moved, if they're already probably have a cut off there, then we will have to get a salvage person to come in and do salvage and move.
Well, I would very much like to see that trailer park closed. I think it's, people must be red for one thing, I'm in favor of that, closing that. I would like to see us approve the eighteen, what is it, eighteen? Okay, so I guess I'd like to ask Mr. King, if we would be open to an amendment to that?
I still guess so.
Or just raise it up to that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Commissioner Milliken, I still have two or three commissioners who want to speak, and I'll come back to you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sockel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate my request that sometime in the very near future, we table this agreement, how the airport authority is running, how we can get a little more accountability on how this thing is operating. And one comment to these two gentlemen, one of you needs to speak, the tag team is getting a little bit too long.
He's the financial chairman, I'm the chairman of the board, so that's why we're both here, we both have certain areas we know more about than each other, we want you to be consistent in this.
I appreciate it, I just wanted to speak.
I can say one thing, you give us a year where we can close that trailer park, and with four of the better, when I think the best business people in town, I think we'll see a different situation here. But with our hands tied, we can...
Close view on how that's operating, we'll watch it very closely.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me say that all of the board members, y'all need to come into awareness, you know everybody understands that, we understand that. But you made a comment that if the city would commit twenty-four thousand and the county would commit twenty-four thousand, that we could close that trailer park, is that...
That's in the new budget for next year.
Okay. Do you think you're going to get twenty-four thousand worth of money out of that trailer park next year?
No, no.
Not if you close it out.
Are we going to give you the trailer park there? No, we're going to go in the hole, probably minus twenty-four thousand. No, it's going to go in the hole, minus forty-eight thousand.
So let me, let me try and understand this. If we keep it open, we're going to go in the hole deeper?
Forty-eight thousand.
So if we closed it, how much in the hole are we going to have?
You won't go in there, forty-eight. That forty-eight, you're going to pay it one way or the other, the city is and the county. But we're going to save all those operating expenses, we're going to move all the water bills, we're going to move all that phantom income that doesn't show up because they don't have it.
Well, I'm not a great politician, but if it's going to cost more to keep it open than it is to close it, close it.
That's what we've been saying.
You're saying the airport or the trailer park?
The trailer park.
Okay, okay.
Now, the airport, like I said, the only problem with airport is we have to be, everybody has to be able to see what's going on there. It's got to be transparent, and even tonight, if it wasn't, when we asked, when it was asked about the manager, and I'm sure there's probably some legal aspects you want to get in tonight, but when you say we're going to pay him his monthly salary and his accrued time, but he quit, that's not real transparent.
Well, it's just clear enough to say there are legal reasons we can't tell him.
And I figured it was. And one last thing, how long did you say those leases were for? Thirty days?
Month to month, that's right.
Month to month?
Exactly, okay, Commissioner Sock, excuse me, Commissioner Rovard.
Thank you, ma'am. What is your total annual budget?
You mean the current budget?
Yeah, what was it approved, you know, okay? Because I know we gave fifty-four thousand, I guess the city's...
It's probably double that, see?
You put in about, what did we say, fifty, sixty, sixty thousand?
Fifty-four.
And then they, the county put in the other, the trailer park base, you come in with probably about twenty thousand that we're going to pay and rest of the sales, I think. It is operating on a sheath screen. Do you really want to come and dig into the lines and look out there?
No, I don't want to dig in the lines.
But you can't get in anymore, you can't get in anymore, sir.
You're asking for eighteen thousand. I think eighteen thousand, you're asking for us eighteen thousand from the city. That's thirty, thirty-six thousand.
Probably thirty-seven because it's eighteen six seventy-eight.
And we times that by twelve, that comes out to four hundred thirty, way up there. But that's why I was asking, because we're only giving, we're only giving a hundred thousand or something from the city and the county. Is there other funds that are coming in or...
This whole sheet that I went over with you up there?
I couldn't see that, no one can see that. I could also...
They had to go in with your private equity if you want to. That is why. We don't have any gun coming in.
Now, the other question, I'm going to step on your toes. First of all, I applaud you guys for doing what you're doing. Nobody else in this room wants to take your job right now. And you're right, you're in all this, this right now. And I just have to ask, it's killing me. Board members owning a building on private, on public property, how much did they pay to have a building built? How much did they rent it out for?
Oh, you have Lifelight?
No, sir. You, your comment, I misunderstood you. You, your comment was that board members own the bill, built a building or a hanger of some sort to give to Lifelight, and they rented to Lifelight. And then they built a private building on public land and rented it. And making, understand either not a profit, no profit, but they are making money off a building that they built on public property.
But they are paying fair market value for the land back to the airport every year. If I remember right, you were at three hundred and something thousand. They actually invested in a hanger, around three sixty in a hanger, which has living quarters for people with twenty-four dollar cars and all this stuff.
So, can that be the building hangers private individuals have on that property? And do they pay rent back to the airport or...
I built the hanger there. I have a twenty-year lease with my plane growing on the rim every year of land. And I've got a hundred fifty thousand on the desk, a mild money...
You do, sir, but you don't, in turn, you don't put it, you don't rent that out to anybody else?
No, 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 but at the end of twenty years, the hanger goes to the airport, it'll all come out. And we'll, I keep that for twenty years, it's not going to pay fair market value then.
So the question I have is that you've done it for personal use for your personal aircraft. You haven't taken your hanger and rented, let's say, and you rent it out to somebody else. You haven't built ten hangers out there or built a hanger for, to rent out? I mean, it's like the...
No, no private person has. The hangers you rent out are owned by the airport.
Now, doesn't this Lifelight hanger come back to the airport thirty years, twenty years?
Twenty-five years, Lifelight goes to the airport. The two, Gary Matthews and Charles Hand are the two owners out of the right hand. Paid it for twenty-five years, and then it goes back to the airport.
So once I build a hanger out there, I pay the airport authority money for the land, and I can do what I want with that hanger. Per se, I can rent it.
No, 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 there are many restrictions on what you do. You've got to have a plan in there. It's not for commercial or to lend to other people. There are, believe me, plenty of rules on that.
Okay, we need to get back to discussion on the amendment.
Matter of fact, I know we've got to get this matter, but there's a lot of questions that we don't have to answer.
I'm just going to run in on the airport.
Okay.
I mean, I know we could be discussing it all night.
Yeah.
And we do have, what, airport party meeting, when? This week?
When's tonight?
When's tonight?
Five thirty, airport.
Five thirty, right across the border, our floor. And then you can, you know, discuss all about the airport or the management.
But we're voting on giving them more money tonight.
Right, we are. Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor, an amendment. We got a motion and a second to add the six thousand, what was it, one hundred and seventy-eight? Oh, I saw, excuse me, Commissioner King.
Thank you, ma'am, I was, that was what I was going to do. Can I choose that six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars on account of, amended to eighteen six seventy-eight?
Okay, let's see, Commissioner Gannon, you said we had to approve of that as a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so the amendment now will bring eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars will be the amendment to the airport authority's budget. So we have a motion and a second on that. Okay, now, any further discussion will be limited strictly to the amendment to this motion. Any further discussion on that? Questions have been talked for. Okay, commissioners, we're casting votes on the amendment to the resolution. And we'll see, we find the resolution again, zero nine dash six dash seven, the general fund budget. And we're wanting to add as another budget amendment the eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to pay airport expenses, to increase that expense. It would reduce our fund balance by that much more. Okay, does everybody understand the amendment to the resolution that we're voting on? All right, ready for, ready to vote? Commissioners, please cast your vote on the amendment to the motion, resolution, I apologize. Any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
Eighteen yeses, zero extensions, and zero noes.
Okay, this amendment, the resolution passes. Okay, now we'll be voting on the resolution as amended. Okay, it's resolution zero nine dash six dash seven as amended. So it would, this amount, eighteen thousand six seventy-eight would be added to the total that you have on your resolution, where it has eight hundred thousand dollars as the amendment. It will now be eight, eight hundred thousand, excuse me, eight hundred, eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's the amount we'd be amending the budget and decreasing the general fund balance. Okay, you ready to vote on the amended resolution? Okay, all right, let's see. That was the last. Do we have any unfinished business to read for this body? Okay, you should have your county clerk's report in front of you that requires approval from the county commission. Will the county clerk please read the report?
Comes Teresa S. Parcher, Chief Deputy on behalf of Kelly A. Jackson, County Clerk from Montgomery County, Tennessee, and presents the county clerk's report for the month of May two thousand nine, which includes applications from member public positions, oaths and bonds of elected officials, oaths and other elected officials, and bonds and oaths of qualified members and deputy officials. I hereby request that the person named on the list of new applicants to the office of member public be elected, that the oaths and bonds of elected officials be approved, the oaths of deputy officials be accepted, the bonds of qualified applicants to the office of member public be approved, and the oaths of deputies' sheriff be accepted and their bonds therefore be approved as taken. This report shall be spread on the minutes of the board and county commissioners this eighth day of June two thousand nine. We have the list of qualified and new applicants passed due last Wednesday night, and there's no personal sureties this month. On the oaths of deputy sheriffs, we have Donald R. Angel Jr., Billy P. Christie, Bernard Gaston, Stephen E. Harris, Elizabeth A. Parker, John A. Sullivan, Don J. Williams.
Okay, I do have a motion to accept the clerk's report. Motion's made by Commissioner Rotten, seconded by Commissioner Gannon. You ready for the vote? Commissioners, please cast your votes on the county clerk's report. Any commissioner like to change their vote? The clerk, please tally the votes. Oops, wait just a minute. Commissioner Gannon, I don't think yours worked. All right, clerk, please tally the votes.
We have nineteen yeses, zero extensions, and zero noes.
Okay, the clerk's report stands approved. Thank you. All right, let's see the other reports filed. You have the May two thousand nine permit revenue and adequate facilities tax report, the accounts and budgets year-to-date report, projects and facilities report, trustees report, and the school system, Mr. Thompson passed out the quarterly construction report on new construction, the Clarksville Montgomery County school system, and also the quarterly financial report. Okay? We have the trustees reports as well. On the nominating committee, Commissioner Skinner is going to report on the nominating committee nominations. Mr. Skinner.
The nominating committee has made and recommended following. I'll place these names in a form of motion before you. The Health, Education, and Housing Facility Board, Rick Ingram Senior, nominated to replace James Earl Thomas, who has been filling an unexpired term, a shared hobby, term to expire June twenty, two thousand fifteen. John Wallace Crowe, nominated to replace Sammy Stewart for a six-year term to expire June two thousand fifteen. Don Jenkins, nominated to replace Tom Srotzky for a six-year term to expire June two thousand fifteen. The Industrial Development Board, which is a mirror of the Health, Education, and Housing Facility Board, Rick Ingram Senior, nominated to replace James Earl Thomas, who has been filling the unexpired term, a shared hobby, term to expire June two thousand fifteen. John Wallace Crowe, to replace Sammy Stewart for a six-year term to expire June two thousand fifteen. Don Jenkins, to replace Tom Srotzky for a six-year term to expire June two thousand fifteen. On the Regional Library Board, Peggy Taylor is nominated to serve another three-year term to expire June two thousand twelve. You will find the Health, Education, and Housing and Industrial Development Board, these nominations. So in that group, you will find those who can pack it. We've made places, please name it for motion.
Okay, I do have a second. Second by Commissioner Milliken. I'm in favor of approving the non-nominated committee's report. Please cast your votes, commissioners. Any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have nineteen yeses, zero extensions, and zero noes.
Non-nominated committee's report is accepted. Thank you. Okay, the next one, you have the county mayor nominations. The only one is the Judicial Commissioner for a one-year term. Catherine Powerless is elected to serve another one-year term to expire June two thousand ten. We entertain a motion to accept the county mayor's nomination. Motion's made by Commissioner Gannon, seconded by Commissioner King. Commissioners, any discussion or any other nominations? Ready to vote? Please cast your votes on the county mayor's nomination for the Judicial Commission. Any commissioner like to change their vote? The clerk, please tally the votes.
Nineteen yeses, zero extensions, and zero noes.
County mayor nominations stand approved. Now, you have the county mayor appointments. The only thing coming forward is the Convention and Districts Bureau. These are joint appointments with the city of Clarksville Mayor. Jake Patel reappointed to serve another three-year term to expire June two thousand and twelve. Red Landis reappointed to serve another three-year term to expire June two thousand and twelve. Joanne Weekly reappointed to serve another three-year term to expire June two thousand and twelve. Todd Harvey appointed to replace Ted McCurry for a three-year term to expire June two thousand and twelve. Okay, let's see. Announcements? I want to remind you this evening to see Elizabeth Black, if you are interested in signing up for the county list ser, service so that you can get in touch with people in your district. If you want to do that, or if you have any questions, people see her, she'll help you with it. St. Bethan Fire Rescue Family Fun Day is June thirteenth, and there should have been a flyer placed on your desk. I hope you saw that. Commissioner Skinner?
I didn't, didn't have a record.
No, did I? Was that on mine or yours? I don't have it on my sheet. I just have Judicial Commissioner. Maybe she probably have it on my sheet, the library board? Was it on the sheet you gave? Debbie, Ms. Jen, should it have been on my sheet?
It's on the nominating committee.
Oh, did we overlook it on the nominating committee? Regional Library Board, Peggy Tate? Okay. It's on, it says June eighth, it has Library Board, Joe Creek, Captain Stafford, June ninth, and then...
Those, no, I'll state, guys, we, they're not even up there.
Oh, they're not up there. It was just there. Okay, now, we did do the Regional Library Board on yours, right? Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Skinner. I believe we've completed everything. Anyone have any announcements they want to make before we dismiss? Thank you very much for your time and attention. I know it's been a lengthier meeting than you probably anticipated, but I think we got some information that we needed. So we will ask the sheriff to please close the meeting for us.
The government county, board of county commissioners now stands adjourned. God save the state and the summary of board of county commissioners.